Good evening. I'm hereby calling to order the October 8, 2018 meeting of the Mayfield Heights City Council. May I have a roll call, please, Lisa?
Mr. Ballestria.
President.
Mr. DeJohn.
Here.
Mrs. Vinnie.
Here.
Mr. Mano.
Here.
Mrs. Sabetta.
Here.
Mrs. Snyder.
Here.
Mrs. Tressi.
Here.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome, everyone, this evening. And we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the September 24, 2018, meeting. I trust everyone had a chance to read them over. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the council meeting on September 24?
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Mano.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Ballestria. Are there any suggested changes, amendments, or deletions to the minutes?
Madam Chairman.
Mrs. Tressi.
Thank you. I was absent at that meeting, but I noticed that it says I voted for Resolution 2018-60 and Ordinance 2018-33.
Thank you. Are you sure you didn't vote for them?
Sent it by courier pigeon.
Lisa, could you make a note of that, please? Any other changes? Okay. Then all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved as written. Next on our agenda are correspondence and announcements. Does any member of council have any correspondence and announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports of officers, starting with the Mayor. Mayor DeSico.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start off by congratulating Chief Elliott and the Fire Department for improving their ISO rating from four to a three. All fire departments are inspected by the Insurance Service Office or the ISO. They do inspections every five years, and after the inspection, they provide a detailed report with a rating. The rating is between one and 10, with one being the best, and very few number ones are ever given. Mayfield Heights, over the years, has obtained fours and fives, and these numbers determine insurance rates for businesses. This is pretty important for attracting and retaining businesses in our city. So I want to congratulate them for getting their rating up to three. Good job. I want to remind everybody that the Community Partnership on Aging is celebrating their 40th anniversary this year, and they're marking that occasion by combining the annual Chili Cook-Off with an anniversary dinner on November 10 at the Hilton Garden Inn on Beta Drive. Tickets are available at the South Euclid office and the Lynnhurst office, and they are $40 per person, or for a table of 10, it's $3.75. The deadline to purchase your tickets is Wednesday, October 24. There will be chili tasting, of course, along with the silent auction, DJ and dancing, and I would ask that you please show your support for this organization because it makes a big impact, positive impact, on many of our older residents in the city. We recently added a new member to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Mike Wagner has sworn in and ready to go. Mike is a longtime resident, realtor in the area, and will be a great asset to the BZA. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any questions for the Mayor? Next, we'll turn to the Director of Law, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have no report this evening, but I would request that council vote to adjourn into executive session at some point to discuss pending or imminent litigation and contract negotiations collectively.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there any questions for Mr. Murphy? Seeing none, we'll move on to Mr. Tribby.
No report.
Any questions for Mr. Tribby? Next on our agenda are reports of committees, commissions, and boards. First, we'll start with the Building Committee, Mrs. Snyder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Building Department did not meet, so I have no report.
Thank you, Mrs. Snyder. Are there any questions for Mrs. Snyder? Finance and Audit Committee, Mrs. Sabetta.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mrs. Sabetta. Are there any questions for Mrs. Sabetta? Move on to the Legislative Committee, Mrs. Tressi.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I did attempt to schedule a legislative meeting for October 10, but I understand Mr. Murphy was unavailable, so Lisa and I will, again, try to coordinate this meeting for next week.
Thank you, Mrs. Tressi. Are there any questions for Mrs. Tressi? Mr. DeJohn?
I don't know if we want to make it a dual meeting with Building about the pods legislation that they've been proposing. So what do you think about making that a dual meeting?
I'm sorry, about what? The pods?
Our pods.
The Mayor? You think it'd be a good idea to have a dual?
That up to me?
We can coordinate it.
Mr. Murphy, do we have that legislation?
Legislation has been?
I think you drafted it.
It has been drafted.
A while ago?
Yes, it has been drafted and sent to the members of the committee?
It has been?
No?
Not yet. Just myself.
Okay. And just Mr. DeJohn?
So do you feel we're ready to add that to the legislative meeting that we're scheduling?
Along with Building?
It was a Building meeting.
Our Building.
Fine with me.
Okay. Lisa will make it a dual meeting, Building and Legislature. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for Mrs. Tressi? We'll move on to Public Works and Services Committee. Mr. Ballestria.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did have a committee of the whole meeting tonight, which talked about a lot of public works and services items earlier this evening. We do have some items on the agenda in the form of resolutions with regards to items that were discussed at previous meetings, and we'll take those up at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Ballestria. Are there any questions for Mr. Ballestria? Seeing none, we'll move on to Recreation and Parks Committee, Mr. Mano.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mayfield Heights and Mayfield Village will be sponsoring the annual Teen Halloween Party this Thursday, October 11, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Wildcat Sport and Fitness. This is a date and location change for the school calendar, open to all 6th to 8th graders at the Mayfield Middle School. Tickets will be on sale during lunch periods on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. The cost is $10 pre-sale or $12 at the door. Extra money will be needed for pizza, chips, drinks, and some games. For more information, call Mayfield Heights or Mayfield Village Recreation Department. Young at Heart Adult Halloween Party is scheduled for October 23 from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. The cost is $10. Pre-registration is required. Why let the kids have all the Halloween fun? Join us in costume if you wish. You'll get an extra raffle ticket for ghoulish games and freaky fun. We will provide heavy appetizers, prizes, and giveaways, a photo booth, and DJ Jam and Joel, and more. Mayfield Heights Halloween Party is scheduled for Saturday, October 27 at the DeJohn Community Center from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Tickets are $7 per person. Tickets must be purchased in advance. Wildcat Sport and Fitness Learn to Swim has its Fall Session 2 coming up October 20 through December 1. Registration opens for school district residents on October 13. Floor hockey registration is coming to a close, and league play begins October 27 for grades 3 through 5 and 6 through 8. Call 440-995-6840 for more information on registering. For any information on any recreational program, please call the office at 442-2627 or check our website. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mano. Is there any questions for Mr. Mano?
Seeing none, we'll move on to Safety and Transportation, Mr. DeJohn.
Thank you, Madam President. This is Fire Prevention Week. The campaign slogan this year is "Look, Listen, Learn. Be aware, fire can happen anywhere." If you want more information about this program, in addition, you can visit their website at nfpa.org. That's N-Nancy-F-Frank-P-Paul-A-Apple.org. Just one side note, and this may have to do with the Police Department, maybe the Building Department, but I've been getting a lot of complaints about garbage being put on tree lawns too early, and after hours, they have to call the Police Department, and so I hope that the Police Department will go to the home and tell them to take the garbage in. But the Building Department does have some type of citation that they can give the homeowner with a warning to take it in, so I don't know. What we want to do as a council to help prevent that from happening, but it's been taking several complaints lately that garbage is being put out days in advance. So thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. DeJohn. Are there any questions for Mr. DeJohn?
I, just to add on to what he's saying, it seems like they wait until the pickup is done, and then the next day, they put piles of stuff out on the tree lawn. Maybe the possibility of having one dedicated person, or a person dedicated to driving the city, looking for this sort of thing, and writing people up, give them a warning the first time, and then impose a stiff fine the next time. If the city of Cleveland can charge people $150 for mixing their trash and their recyclables, we certainly should be able to find somebody for breaking the rules on putting their trash out on the curb, you know, after the normal pickup.
Thank you, Mr. Mano. Next, we'll move on to Board of Zoning, Mrs. Sabetta.
Thank you, Madam President. The Board of Zoning will meet tomorrow evening here at City Hall, and there are several items on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sabetta. Are there any questions for Mrs. Sabetta? Mr. DeJohn?
Mrs. Sabetta, what items are those on the agenda?
There's a tabled item, and then two new items, one concerning parking and the other concerning, sorry. Yes, shed in the backyard on Ridgeberry.
Thank you. Just got the?
Thank you, Mrs. Sabetta. Next, we'll move on to Planning Commission, Mr. Ballestria.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Planning Commission did not meet Monday. We did not have an agenda, so I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Ballestria. Are there any questions for Mr. Ballestria? Seeing none, we now come to the public portion of the meeting. Pursuant to city code, each person will be allotted five minutes to speak, with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for the entire public portion. Although it's not a time for public debate, this is your opportunity to address council with your concerns. Please know there will be no personal attacks or comments, or comments will be allowed. Also, if you are here in connection with an agenda item, this is your opportunity to address council. If you would like to be heard, please raise your hand and be recognized, then approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. It is now 7:16. I would like to open up the public portion. Please state your name and address.
John Mulchan, 1966 Reed's Court Trail. It's in Westlake, Ohio, here in conjunction with the use of the 1413 Golden Gate Boulevard as a self-storage facility. So the BZA approved the use for that, and I just wanted to address whatever I can address for you.
So I just want to remind you, you have five minutes maximum to speak.
Yep.
Thank you.
Going to try to go. There are a number of existing uses in the, the whole purpose of the meeting today is whether the use of self-storage is in general keeping with the other uses in the district. These are the other uses in the district. It could be, you can use a building for a bank. It's already failed as a bank. You could use it for retail. There is some retail in the building. There's service centers. You can use gas stations. There's motels, hotels, funeral homes. So the classification has a lot of retail and wholesale uses. We believe it's consistent with the use of self-storage as the renting of space for people to put their stuff. I think that's very consistent with the use as an office building, where you rent the space out for people to use as an office building, also to do storage. There are currently tenants in the building that are using it primarily for storage. We also think it's consistent as with use as a hotel, where you're renting out space for people primarily use overnight for this, and even the prior use as a racquetball club, you're renting out space for people to use for an activity. It's also a retail product, so it's very similar to the Costco, the Best Buy type of customers, although we will have extremely low traffic. We only expect to have typical customer comes once a month, which comes out to about 25 people a day. So it is very low traffic impact on Mayfield Road and on Gates Mills Boulevard. The existing building, that's all I have on the use, but I want to give you some background about the existing building and what it is that we're trying to build, and I'm sure you'll tell me when my five minutes is up. The existing building has some issues. There is a wall that is down. The roof leaks. The parking lot doesn't drain properly. That is a drain underneath that pile of water. It had not been raining for a while. That's another look at the drain. And it's in general disrepair. We believe that it's a failed office building. It really can't compete with the office space at Lander Haven, at Landerbrook, Chagrin Boulevard, the new Pinecrest kind of areas, so we think something has to happen there. We'd like it to be a self-storage facility. And we don't currently have a rendering yet because the structural engineers have just come back with the design to make sure that we can save the old building. It's possible we might have to demolish the building and build a 100% new facility. So we'll obviously have that before we get to the Planning Commission and back to the BZA and to the Architectural Review Boards. But this happens to be a building that's kind of the model for what we've been trying to do. This happens to be in Westlake, Ohio. It's the only Class A facility we think that's in the area.
I'm sorry, your time is running out. Would you like five more minutes?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Ballestria, move second.
Second.
Mr. DeJohn, all in favor?
Aye.
You have five more minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take you on a quick tour inside what the facility, we hope it will look like. It won't look exactly like this. We have to match an existing building, so I'm going to let architects do that kind of design. You do not want me designing your building. So in this building, there is a sales office. I can learn to do this without my mouse. I wish I had brought the mouse. It has wine storage for people with high-end wines that want temperature and humidity control. All they really want to understand is it's going to be a very first-class place. This is not drive-up self-storage out in the country where you drive up the gravel road and put your stuff in a box. And I just want to show you the drive-through, and then I'll let you ask whatever questions So in this facility, you drive right into the building. More than 60% of self-storage customers are women. They want to feel safe. I want to feel safe. You drive up at night, and you drive into the building. You don't get out of your car unless you feel safe. So you can drive right into the building. So it's going to be a first-class kind of facility that we're looking to do. I don't know if anybody has any questions or?
Well, I think we'll take questions when we get to that part of the agenda, if you don't mind.
Okay. I just wanted to give you some background.
Okay. Thank you so much.
The uses in keep-keeping with the general keeping of the district, and we'll obviously come back with renderings and exactly what the building will look like when we go to planning.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard? Okay, we will now close the public portion at 7:24. First on our agenda, we're going to need a motion to adjourn to executive session at the end of the regular business. Can I have a motion to Mrs. Snyder?
Sorry.
Seconded by Mr. Ballestria. Roll call, please, Lisa.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mr. Ballestria?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes. We will adjourn to executive at the end of the meeting tonight. Next, we will move on to Resolution 2018-59. I'm going to ask Mrs. Snyder to chair this resolution, since I have a personal relationship with the property owner.
Resolution 2018-59, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Acting Chairman. Resolution number 2018-59, a resolution confirming the action of the Board of Zoning Appeals of the City of Mayfield Heights in determining a self-storage facility use proposed by John Mulchan on behalf of Fair Child Management Company for 1413 Golden Gate Boulevard, Mayfield Heights, Ohio, also known as permanent parcel number 862-06-050, 862-06-071, 862-06-072, and 862-06-073, is a use consistent with the uses authorized in a U4 local retail wholesale district. Second reading.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Ballestria, seconded by Mrs. Sabetta. Roll call on the motion to suspend. Mr. DeJohn?
No.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
No. I abstain.
Is it no or abstain?
Um, no.
Mr. Ballestria?
Yes.
Mr. Mano?
No.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Abstain.
So the motion has failed, because there were not six votes to suspend. Do I have a motion to place this on second reading?
Hold on a minute. It's there.
So roll call. So we're not going to go? Okay, we're good.
It's been read. Second.
Sorry. So the Resolution 2018-59 has been placed on second reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Snyder. We will move on to Resolution 2018-61. Mr. Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Resolution 2018-61, a resolution authorizing the Mayor to enter into a Contract Four and on behalf of the City of Mayfield Heights with the District Board of Health of the County of Cuyahoga, State of Ohio. First reading.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Moved by Mrs. Sabetta, seconded by Mrs. Snyder. Roll call, please, on the motion to suspend.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mr. Ballestria?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Mano, seconded by Mrs. Snyder. Discussion, Mayor?
This is just something we do every year to satisfy the Ohio revised code for providing this type of health coverage to, or health services, I should say, to our residents.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions? Discussion?
I have one quick question. Do we have a way of tracking how many hits they get in this community?
Yeah, they put out a report that's available online that actually, you know what? I think I may have a printed version I could send to council, if you haven't seen one. Let me see if I can track that down.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else? Roll call, please, Lisa.
Mr. Ballestria?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes. Resolution 2018-61 has been adopted. Next on our agenda is Resolution 2018-62. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Resolution number 2018-62, a resolution authorizing an agreement with James G. Zupka, CPA, Inc., to provide professional accounting services for the City of Mayfield Heights, Ohio. First reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? Moved by Mrs. Tressi, seconded by Mr. Ballestria. Could I have a roll call, please, Lisa?
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mr. Ballestria?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Mrs. Sabetta, seconded by Mrs. Snyder. Any discussion? Mr. DeJohn?
How long have we been with this company?
Mayor?
We've been working with this company for almost 20 years. They're very familiar with our financial system and are able to prepare these reports with very efficiently. There's a slight increase, as I mentioned in my memo, but it's not a large increase, and it would cover the costs over the next three years to do this work. Provides continuity to.
Thank you, Mr. Tribby. Any other questions? Seeing none, can I have a roll call, please, Lisa?
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mr. Ballestria?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes. Resolution 2018-62 has been adopted. Next on our agenda is Resolution 2018-63. Mr. Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Resolution number 2018-63, a resolution authorizing the Mayor to enter into a contract with Jack Dohany Companies for the purchase of an Elgin Street Sweeper for use by the Mayfield Heights Service Department and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Ballestria, seconded by Mrs. Sabetta. Roll call, please, on the motion to suspend.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mr. Ballestria?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Mrs. Snyder, seconded by Mr. Mano. Mr. Ballestria, you have anything you want to?
This is previously approved by council. This is the NEORSD reimbursing the city for stormwater management in their community cost-share program, if you recall. This is, like I said, is previously approved by council as recommended by the Public Works Committee, and this is, pertains to Resolution 2018-63 and 65, one being the street sweeper and the other being the vac truck.
Thank you, Mr. Ballestria. Any questions? Mrs. Tressi?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Ballestria, do we currently have a sweeper truck that we're going to be selling? We?
Oh, I don't think we're going to do anything with this.
No. Mr. Fenero shaking his head no.
Go on. No.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mr. Ballesteria?
Yes.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-63 has been adopted. Next on our agenda is Resolution 2018-64. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Resolution number 2018-64, a resolution authorizing a member-community infrastructure grant program agreement, buying between the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District and the City of Mayfield Heights for the city's vacuum truck catch basin maintenance program. First reading.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Mano, seconded by Mrs. Snyder. Roll call, please, on the motion to suspend.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mr. Ballesteria?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Ballesteria, seconded by Mrs. Snyder. Any other discussion on this? Or this is a new one, Mayor? Anything to add?
No, this just formally applies for... Allows us to apply for the grant to pay for the trucks.
That's a good thing, then.
Grants.
Grants.
Reimbursement. Reimbursement, I'm sorry.
Can I have a roll call, please, Lisa?
Technicality.
Mr. Ballesteria?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mrs. Vinnie?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-64 has been adopted. Next on our agenda is Resolution 2018-65. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Resolution number 2018-65, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Jack Dohany Companies for the purchase of a used combination sewer vacuum and high-pressure jet rotor truck for use by the Mayfield Heights Service Department and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules? Moved by Mr. Ballesteria, seconded by Mrs. Sabetta. Can I have a motion... I mean, can I have a roll call, please, on the motion to suspend?
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeJohn?
Yes.
Mr. Mano?
Yes.
Mr. Ballesteria?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabetta?
Yes.
Mrs. Tressi?
Yes.
Mrs. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Vinnie?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Ballesteria, seconded by Mrs. Sabetta. I think Mr. Ballesteria already discussed this, so is there any further discussion? Mrs. Tressi?
Thanks, Madam Chairman. Are we starting a new program with the city's vacuum truck and catch basin maintenance program? Is that a new program that we're beginning? I know...
I'm going to let Mr. Fenaro address that. Mrs. Vinnie?
Mr. Fenaro?
I'll address a little bit. I know we're going to do more frequency with the sweeping of the streets with the new street sweeper. That'll be an additional service to our residents. And then, Joe, you can comment on the vac truck.
Yeah, it's something we're going to start over. We used to do it. We stopped doing it. We're going to bring it back and start cleaning catch basins more often.
And is that like why we hired the one gentleman who came from the county? Is he...
No, not at all.
Oh, I wondered if he was...
Mr. Fenaro, would you talk in your mind, please?
Not at all related.
Oh, I wondered if he was like, if he did that with the county and now he's going to do it. Or any one of the service department people will do it.
Correct.
Mr. Ballesteria?
Gail, just to add, we stopped doing this service, and when catch basins had to be cleaned, we would have to call the county.
Right.
And there was a charge for that with the city. Now the city's going to assume that responsibility of cleaning out the catch basins again.
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. DeJohn?
Mr. Fenaro, so the money we pay for our sewer care is not... It's cleaning of the catch basins is not included in that? We have to actually pay them to come out and clean out the bases?
That's where they take that money from. So, yes, you do pay them from that fee.
Correct. So it's kind of... It's not like we have to pay them every time we come out. So now will they reimburse us to do it?
They will not.
So we don't get any extra money for doing this?
From the county, we do not. From regional sewer, they're covering the cost of the truck.
Oh, so they will reimburse us?
Two different places. So the county who collects your fees will not reimburse us. Regional sewer will provide our cost share dollars to pay for the truck.
Mayor?
Correct me if I'm wrong, though. We won't be calling them to come out to do that work, so you won't be... They won't be charging that fund?
Correct. So the money they would charge the account for doing catch basins, they won't be charging that money correctly.
So I guess will that be increasing our cost for our service department if, you know, we have to have people, you know, 24/7 to do that?
We're going to be using people that we have in-house already and cross-training a bunch of employees to do that work, and the trucks being covered.
So we're just getting a truck for the cost of that?
Right, I don't see...
The benefit of getting it done a little bit faster, right? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Mano?
Joe, they'll still come out and clean individual cleanouts for homeowners if they have roots and stuff like that, and there's no charge for that.
This is a whole nother discussion that we might want to have later. You do get charged for that.
Well, that's supposed to come out of the tax...
For anything you choose, the money you're building up, can you use it for anything? Or does it have to be just for stormwater or sewer or...
We're getting really confused. So stormwater and cost share separate, but the county collects sanitary and stormwater also, is split into sanitary and storm, and then they use that for sanitary and storm issues.
And that's all you can use the money for?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. DeJohn?
Just one other question. So as we collect this money and the fund becomes bigger and bigger, and let's say I have a house where I have a cross-contamination or cross-line where it's taking on both sewage and stormwater, so would the city then be able to come in and fix that for me out of that fund?
Oh, they would.
We do that right now. Now you're getting really way out there, because if it's on your side, it's on your property.
On my property?
No.
Okay.
The city side, yes, we fix it.
Why would it be on the city side, though?